Whenever you come forward, please state your name and address and sign in. I'll start on my left side of the room. Anyone on my left side like to speak? Anyone on my left side? Yeah, my left, you're right.
I'm Woody Bailey, Executive Director of Cruising the Coast. I think we've made a lot of progress with this proposed ordinance. Appreciate being involved in some discussions to talk about the ordinance. Overall, as far as the ordinance is concerned, if we have to have this ordinance, I think we can live, we being Cruising the Coast, I think a lot of other events can probably live with the changes that are being proposed. You know, we'll kind of have to see after this thing is passed, whether or not it's going to need to be tweaked or changed because there are still concerns I have now that I had on the very first time when I first read this ordinance. There's still a lot left to interpretation as far as the way the ordinance is written. You know, three years from now, five years from now, whoever's sitting at this council table, whoever's running Cruising the Coast, it could be potentially a different ballgame than we all understand it currently. Could some of the small events around town be affected by this? It's hard to say. Hopefully, they won't be, but if a six-year-old birthday party has 200 or so people that turn out at that party, could they be potentially shut down because they haven't complied and gone down to City Hall and gotten a special event permit? A big gathering after a funeral? I mean, there's a lot of things here again in interpretation as to, you know, what is going to happen and how this is going to be interpreted by everyone. Future special events, I've talked about this before. When you look at this ordinance, it's pretty daunting, all the requirements, all the things you've got to do. Will other events, potential events go somewhere else? Another big change, really hadn't talked about that much, is are the RVs on the beach? I mean, some of these things are going to be major changes from what we are accustomed to seeing in the past. Is this the best thing to do for the city? There are going to be economic impacts, I think, from this. Just like I say, just major changes in doing business in the city of Biloxi. But we'll be glad to work with the city, whatever is passed. And I think, you know, we can work with this ordinance overall, but there's some real challenges out there that are confronting the city when this ordinance gets passed. Is it the best thing for us? I guess we'll see and see what y'all decide to pass. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on my left, you're right? All right, anyone on my right, you're left? All right.
I live at 19498 Suena Street in Biloxi. First of all, thank you for the opportunity to speak to each of you about this ordinance. I'm representing the crew of Neptune as the captain in this capacity, so I have to echo some of the things that Woody said is it seems this is very subjective and applying this is will be very subjective and it's hard to be objective when you're deciding or when the special events committee decides who gets approved and who doesn't, who gets in-kind donations, who doesn't. And it leaves, I believe, those governing bodies open for judgment. I also think, while I do appreciate what's here and the work that's gone into it, I feel like it is, it's a lot of work and a lot of effort to help curb one or two or three events that have a negative impact on the city while at the same time could be eliminating or pushing away those events that have a great positive quality of life impact to the residents of the city of Biloxi. Not just the residents, but the businesses in the city of Biloxi. So like what he said as well, a big economic impact and it's just, it's concerning to see how it's going to be enforced moving forward. Like he said, when you guys are gone, when we're gone, and there are other people here left to interpret what you're putting in place right now and what you meant by it and how you meant for it to be governed. So that's all I have. Thank you very much.
All right, anyone else that would like to speak? If not, we'll close citizen comments, move to the policy agenda. Are we reading these or? Okay. So she said, since it's just a list of them, we'll just discuss these without reading them. So Peter, is there anything that you want to address or?
No, we, you know, we've, we've gone over, I think from the original draft about five months ago. We've listened to what some of our organizations have talked about, some of the concerns they've had. We've broadened the exceptions. We've produced any sort of impact fees. We've, we've done what we feel in working with the chief, what needs to be done to control things that need to be controlled. The organizations that are currently Neptune, Mardi Gras, Cruising the Coast, they're already doing this stuff and already meeting with the police and already laying out their plan. I mean, just for example, what's been handed out today, the Cruising the Coast Downtown Block Party, October 4th, they meet with the city year round. Everything they do is already basically in place. And what we're trying to do is, somebody wants to do something on that scale, they need to, they need to follow certain rules and requirements. If there aren't any rules and requirements, you can't expect anyone to follow them. And it's just a matter of, as far as being subjective, it's pretty clear in the resolution and the ordinance. If somebody doesn't feel they're getting a fair shake from the committee or there's some, anything that they're being allowed to do that, hey, we used to be able to do that and this isn't right, they come to the council the next, the next meeting and be heard by the council. You know, what could happen 20 years in the future, that's with any ordinance. You can't predict how any future council is going to interpret anything. But looking around at any city that hosts large events, I couldn't find any other city that doesn't have something on their books because otherwise you just, you're inviting potential chaotic situation. And in fairness to our police and that have to monitor these things and manage it, we felt our charge was to do something that we could put requirements across the board. And we wanted to put requirements that the existing people could live with. And I think we've done that. So I guess as far as any specifics, I don't know what order they come in, but we could, we could talk to those specifics. We would like to go ahead and just get these, get them on for first reading next week and second, second reading would be after that because I think the chief will tell you, his office needs to know that there's going to be, that they're going to have some means to deal with things that are coming up in the future.
Let me just jump in and add that. This is for the greater good and we've expressed, when I may ask, we're not, it's not the intention to harm or impede any kind of thing that is good for our community. But it's, you know, again, with the chiefs and legal, something needs to be on the books. So when that, that other things happen, we have some basis to, to help and ensure, you know, public safety and, and, you know, the good time everybody's trying to have.
So I guess I'll start to my left and if you have any of these you want to address, George, we'll start and you can just go through each one if you.
Yeah, I've been going along and listening to everything. I just don't see where we've done anything to change the problems we had. The problem we had has not addressed at all in this, which you put in rules and regulations and like you said, special events of any kind, you gotta go get an approval to do that. So I don't care if they have karaoke somewhere in the bars that night, bingo, so you have to come through the city every time we do something. You gotta go to the city and get that done. Yeah, well, they don't know it because it says in here, special events.
Now, the ordinance is pretty, is very clear. If you're a business and you conduct certain business activities, you can continue to conduct those business activities, only if you're having an event on a piece of property that is outside of what you normally do. If you normally have a karaoke night or something at your bar every night, then that's part of your business.
I mean, special events is a wide open word. I mean, I don't know if that controls anybody, does anything in their house, their own property, they have parties up there, you have to go get an event permission to do that on personal, I mean, on personal property. I mean, you got the thing wide open where you gotta follow all these laws and that, people aren't going to know that. So we're going to shut them down, put them in jail?
No, there's exceptions, there's exemptions, weddings don't, weddings, funerals, those are not under this permitting process. If you're having a commercial party in your residence, then that's not, that's not, that's not going to be allowed. That shouldn't be allowed. So that would occur because you're not required to have, you're not typically allowed to have commercial parties in a, in a home.
That's what I'm saying, that's not allowed anyway.
Well.
Right. So that has nothing to do with special events because you can't do that in private residence, run a commercial party out of it. We went through that last time. But my problem is, all the problem we have on Highway 90, all the problem we had at Broadfield, we're not, we don't seem to be addressing them because nobody, there's nobody controls that, there's nobody being charged, there's nobody going to be held responsible because there is nobody. So how do we address that? And that's where the problem came from in the last bad event.
Well, if there's a party happening at a certain piece of property on, on the beach where a large number of people expected to gather on a commercial piece of property and there's no permit for that, then, then that can be addressed and this, there's a means to address it. Right now, there are no means to address that, that property of Broadfield. Money can change hands and he can just rent it to whoever he wants.
I mean, just like, they're not supposed to be on taking over the parking lot at Edgewater. They do it anyway. That's private property and that's their parking lot. And that's where half our problem started and yet you can't control that. How are you going to stop that? They got 5,000 people in the parking lot. I mean, you can't, that's what I'm saying, we're not addressing, to me, the issues that need to be addressed. And that's just my opinion. I just, I don't see where we're going with anything.
Well, any other, any other things like curfews or extra laws or special weekend or something like that, that can always be overlaid on top of this. But to do that, you've got to have a, a baseline of, has anybody reported this party is occurring? Is anybody in charge of this? And if not, then that allows, that does allow for extra rules and curfews and things like that.
I don't see, I don't see how we can control anything like that because it's, they pop up events, they're not set up, they're nothing official, there's nobody actually running this event, there's nobody to contact, there's nobody, we're getting a whole liable completely.
Right.
And all this stuff here is more on the people that, like you said, do everything right. We don't have a problem.
There's no requirement for anybody to register if they just want to have a pop-up party. And that's, that's what you don't see in other cities. You don't see that in Panama City. Their fees and fines are much greater than this from what I've seen in Panama City. But they're designed to attack these same problems.
I don't know, I don't know how you find somebody that's not even around, you know, on Facebook, so what do you call it? Twitter, Facebook, all these things they deal with. So how do you go after, what do you go after? A name?
Well, there's property owners. We know who the property owners are.
Yeah, well, we own, the San Beach is owned by the county, so who are you going after? Highway 90 is blocked up. We only have so, certain many policemen, you know, I mean, they could only do so much for 20,000, 30,000 people running up and down Highway 90. Yeah. Anyway, I just, I don't see where we actually go anywhere gaining anything. Anyway, that's my side.
Mr. Guines? Oh, come on. Ms. Newman? Mr. Glavine? Mr. Tisdale?
Yeah, correct me if I'm wrong, currently, we really have nothing effectively on the books. This puts something on the books, more or less.
Correct.
Okay. And I'm sure, I have no doubt, we'll have to tweak it in some respect and I appreciate Mr. Bailey's comments and Mr. Landry's comments. And a lot of this is ground zero. A lot of these events are ground zero by the Coliseum and my ward and I will, I would tell you that the people that live in those neighborhoods would tell you, we don't care if they have another special event in Biloxi or not because we can't get to where we gotta go, the noise, the nudity, the fights, all that kind of stuff. So I know that's not Biloxi in its entirety, but it's in those neighborhoods because they really bear the brunt of a lot of these events. Having said that, I'm in favor of us getting something on the books that gives the chief the authority to take some actions which he really, if I understand correctly, has no basis to take some action under some of these circumstances. This gives him the authority to do that. The, I guess, one concern and it's a law enforcement concern is, let's say you had a group just there in the Edgewater parking lot and, and it's not scheduled, you can't do that here, you got to move on. And they're not moving on. I think that's addresses George's concern to some extent. That's, I'm thinking that's potential conflict. We, we got a great chief, we got a great police force. I know they'll do everything they can to resolve those kind of issues and get folks moving. But, which brings me to my next point and how, how do, I know that Mr. Bailey's received notice, Mr. Landry's received notice more or less, but some of these other events, particularly those that are social media based, how do we notice them? What's, what's the procedure for getting the word out officially so that people who are watching this video, this workshop, know where to look? I'm sure some of these, I'm sure these ordinances will be somewhere prominently on the city's website, but how do we, how do we notice all these organizations formally? How is that, how is that done?
Yeah, Chief, do you want to speak to that? I think we have a general plan, but he probably has some specifics.
Thank you, Chief.
Well, first, what we would hope is that if someone's going to have an event, that they're going to approach us and tell us they're going to have an event, which is a whole reason for these ordinances. If they don't approach us and tell us they're having an event, we have the authority at that point, whether it's social media driven, we have the authority to be able to call whoever we believe it appears that is driving it in the social media. We can call them and tell them, this is not happening, here's the proper steps you have to take in order to do this. We can put them on notice that way. And then if they come down and they ask for the permit and it looks like it's something legitimate, then we'll, we'll move forward with it and you'll end up with it. What we're going to do by not setting some order, it's a little bit ridiculous that we don't have any ordinances in place now. What we're going to do by not putting something in place is you're going to stifle other, other events that want to, legitimate events that want to come to this city. As it stands right now, we don't, we don't, we don't really, most of the time, don't have any knowledge of, unless it's a large event like Woody's or, or somebody like that, we don't have any knowledge if they're going to have an event or not because there's nothing requiring them to let us know. So you'll have a large event on the east end of town, a large event on the west end of town, you'll have something up north. We do not have the police department to handle that. That would be something we can tell them ahead of time, even if it's a legitimate event. We could tell them, we're going to, we're going to look at your event, we think it's a good event, we don't see anything that violates the law there, but you can't have it on this date or this date because those dates are already absorbed. Law enforcement, fire department, public works, they're already absorbed by dealing with these other events. We don't have the manpower to do it on those dates, but maybe we can do it on another date. So it just really opens the field up for even play by everybody and it doesn't overload city workers, whether it be law enforcement, fire, or public works.
And I just want to remind everybody, what's driving this is the safety and welfare of the public, not only the participants, but the public. That's what's driving this. And the fact, as you said, Chief, that sometimes you got a couple of events going on here, your staff can only be stretched so far.
So. That's correct. And even, even ahead of time, we're planning those events that we know about, we're planning them. We're bringing officers in on their off days. We're eliminating vacation and if it's a pop-up event like that, we can't do those things. All we can do with a pop-up event is deal with it swiftly and quickly and shut it down as quick as possible before it gets out of hand. I'm sure there are other events that want to come to the city and we would certainly welcome that, but we've got to have, there's got to be some mechanism in place for us to be able to see what's coming ahead of time. And I'm sure that all of us want to know that the promoter that's coming to town is a legitimate promoter. It's not someone that's been run out of Orange Beach and someone that's been run out of other cities because of the way they conducted their event. I'm sure none of us want that.
Thank you, Chief. Appreciate it. Thank you, Peter. All right, we'll go back. Mr. Demming, do you have any questions, comments?
I don't have any general questions or comments when we discuss these actual items.
That's, that's what we're doing now. We're not, these aren't, we're not voting on these today. This is just a workshop. This is going to be on the agenda.
So when we went through all these, I had numbers of questions, numbers of questions that aren't answered by these things. For exact, for example, the parade issue, right? If the parade ordinance is amended in the way that it is, there's an addition to, for the organizer to submit to a background check, but in this ordinance, it doesn't define what the background check, what the purpose of the background check is for, what qualifies for a license, what disqualifies for a license. And in that regard, it's so vague that somebody wouldn't know. They would organize an event, come here and then be told, well, you've got a speeding ticket in the past three years, so we're going to deny this permit. Right? So it can be, it can be, and I'm not saying that you would do that, that's egregious, that's just a.
I understand.
An absurd example, right? But I don't want it to be, I don't want it to be arbitrary, you know, in the sense that someone can just be refused on, on some illegitimate basis because we don't have any qualifying standards in here.
So, so, and some of that was intentionally done that way. Certainly, we're not going to stop somebody from trying to put on an event because they've, they've made some mistakes in the past or they have an outstanding traffic ticket or some of that. But let me, let me just take you back a few years to when we had a promoter here that was on federal probation, was actually wanted in other states. And then a promoter before that who wasn't allowed out of the state of Louisiana, but nonetheless, he was here. And that, that all came to light, not because we were able to do the background check, simply because people called and complained. That's what we're looking for. We want to make sure that it's somebody, like I said before, that we would welcome to the city of Biloxi, that we're know going to do a decent, outstanding job and not be sneaky, not be wanted somewhere for drug trafficking or whatever else. So I mean, that's the reason for that. So it's absolutely, we can, we can restrict that more. I mean, we can, we can write those things in there, but to me, you know, it's, it's going to come before the mayor and you guys anyway at some point. And if you see that we've rejected somebody for a traffic ticket, I mean, I'm sure you're going to say something about that. You're not going to see that coming from our department, but.
Yeah, and I don't think we would, but I don't know that we would see that anyway. I think if an applicant goes to you guys and gets rejected, they just disappear, right? Unless they do complain to us. But I would just, I would like to put a qualifier, like clearly if somebody's wanted, whether it's federally or in another state, that's, I think, a good basis for denial, but also, you know, that would also bring about a reporting requirement. And so I think that something like that is, is reasonable, but I think we should just put it in a white and black text, just to make people comfortable that they're not being targeted. Not that we, not that I think you, Chief Miller, or your staff would ever do it, but I don't know who's going to hold that office in the future, right? I don't know who's going to hold these offices in the future and it's just to protect.
We can certainly do that and I don't, you know, you could pass all of them today and next week, I assure you, there's going to be some issues that we're going to have. And that's what Peter was saying earlier, issues we're going to have to go back and address and work with. But the best I can tell, we are the only city around that doesn't have something in place that, that allows the city to basically check on a person before they, before they come here for a big event.
I've got to get back to all of my notes. I ran it through them and I've got to find them in my file. I wasn't prepared to speak this quickly. So thank you, Mr. Chief Miller. Nathan, I'll address this more if there's more conversation needs to go on, I'll find my notes on this.
Mr. Glavine?
Thank you. As our president referred to, this is a workshop. It hasn't even got to a first reading yet. When it gets to a first reading, we'll have more time to make sure that we're going to get this right if this is the direction that we're moving in. I have no problem with a nominal fee to identify special events as long as the fee is not excessive and it allows law enforcement to identify the nature of the event, how big the event is, so we can get the logistics together. Some of the established events have communicated very well. We know what those particulars are and that makes it easier as we book those events year in and year out. So a couple of questions I have though on this special event. So venues such as the Civic Center or the Point Cadet Pavilion, which already have stipulations that people approach a contact person, do they fall under this special event or do they fall under the requirements of booking that space and providing certain things?
That's correct, the latter, because, and that's one of the changes we made to help streamline this whole process. If you're booking the Civic Center or a city-owned facility or the town green for a festival, we already have your particulars, we already have your contact information, indemnifying agreement is already in place. And so that would not require any of these permits or anything like that, any of the fees. That'll also serve to channel larger events to these city properties as opposed to a random parking lot, if you're going to have that. Because the fee, you know, the fee that may or may not be refundable or whatnot is going to be assessed on that parking lot, but not necessarily you would, as part of your city rental fee. So it's designed to channel these events towards the, the larger properties, Civic Center, Grued Center. If you have an agreement with the, with those organizations, the special events permit doesn't apply.
Thank you, Counselor. So moving forward just a little deeper on that, if a new event such as the Blessing of the Fleet, Fado Do contracted the Point Cadet Pavilion area and adhere to the contractual content that they have, they wouldn't fall under the auspices of this special event ordinance per se?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. So it brings me to the other thing, Chief, to give you the tools to do your job when we know that there's an event that has not made the proper application, we know they are coming from whatever sources, social media or other sources. And then how do we ensure to give you the tools to place, whether it's curfews, whether it's alcohol bans, whether it's traffic vetting or putting a traffic flow plan into place? How do we ensure that you have the means to be able to do that, have the authority to do that?
There's a good bit of this ordinance that addresses that and allows for that.
Okay.
But the most important thing first would be to determine that that event is happening, whether it be social media or not, you know? And I'm sure that after this is in place, if it's passed, like we said earlier, there's going to be some tweaking that takes place about the first event that someone steps up and tries to have without having, having any permits or any of that, pop-up event, we're going to learn a lot from that one, you know, as to what we, we need to do or, you know, what, what help we need from the council or the mayor.
Okay. Thank you, Chief. One last just point. So I'm, I have a neighborhood, I have an HOA, we have a common clubhouse that we want to throw a Halloween party at. How does, how are they affected? Is it privately affected and they can just go ahead and do that or do they have to adhere to this ordinance and report it? How is that handled, Counselor?
I guess the specifics of that, I think, I mean, that's more of a social club. I don't, I would have to get into the details of it. I think that's just more of a, a meeting like a ward meeting, you know, if you had under 200. -under 200 people.
Some of us have, you know, 200 people at our ward meetings. Would we have to pay the fee or, or whatever? I'm, no, I digress.
Yeah, right.
I, I digress on that. Don't answer that. Those are the questions I have. But I also want to thank Cruisin' the Coast, Woody. I want to thank you, Chet. I want to thank you and anybody else that here is representing your organizations. We're gonna try to get this right. And with any ordinance, if there are some things that we need to change later that, that we didn't foresee or that causes angst, we can go back and change these ordinances or tweak the ordinances to make them, you know, perform like they should perform. With that, I'll yield my time.
All right, I've got a general answer for you there. Something like that, assuming that most of your neighborhood is a, is a law-abiding bunch. That's not gonna require any city services during that meeting. You wouldn't need police chaperones or fire patrols or anything like that. So there's no permit fee for that, for that type.
Thank you.
I don't really have any questions. You know, I think we all pledged to the chief, whenever the events, the spring break went down, that we would give you whatever resources you needed so that you could better protect our city. And you can look around the room today and there's a represent, a representative for the Mardi Gras guys scraping the coast, cruising the coast. But you see who isn't in the room. And so as Kenny said, and I echo it, if we pass these ordinances and something arises that's an issue, you know, we're not, this is not to punish the people who are doing things the right way. We're implementing these to try to make our city a safer place and it doesn't get out, you know, chaotic and out of control. And so with that being said, I'll support these, but I'm ready to make whatever amendments are needed so that people who are following the rules and doing things the right way aren't punished by these deals. And that's all I have. Mr. Lawrence?
Yeah, I just, the major problem we seem to have, and Chief knows well, is the Coliseum. All right, that's controlled by somebody else. When they have the events in the Coliseum, there's not a problem. But those 15,000 people, say, leave the Coliseum, they're on our streets, they don't go anywhere. And that's what normally causes the crowd on the beach. Now, can, can we do anything about the Coliseum? And all the people get on the beach, but you can do about people on the beach. And that's where, last year, we had 15, 20,000 people on the beach and walking them down Highway 90. And that was a problem. All this stuff that we're doing here, and not, not changing any of that. And that's where it all, that's why they all at the mall, because of the Coliseum. The events at the Coliseum. So what say so we have in the Coliseum? They, they book the group they can book, and they did. They make money off it. That's understandable. But then how do we handle them 15,000 people coming out of a concert? That's the main, that's where the problem comes from. They get on the street and stay on the street. So everybody goes up there to see each other because that's where they all at, by the Coliseum, on the Highway 90 and the beach. That's why you wind up so many people. And then we get that problem, even if police can't do anything because they can't move. Can't run up and down Highway and nothing else.
Yeah. So that, you're, you're absolutely right. That is a problem. Currently, what we have in this ordinance is that, that a representative from the Coliseum and the Sheriff's Department will have to meet with us before they have these large events so that we can at least discuss it, get some open dialogue as to what, what to expect from them and what we think they should do. Currently, it's gonna be difficult, I think, to, right now. Something we may have to do later on to try to put more regulations in place with the Coliseum. But at least that is written there. That's there where they have to meet with us. We have to discuss it in open form and hopefully we can work out some of the problems that, you know, that, that we've had in the past. Does that sound fair?
And we, we have in here that we'd like to meet with the, the Coliseum, a member of the Board of Supervisors and a member of the Sheriff's Department, meeting monthly, so we know what's coming up at the Coliseum in general, so the police are not caught off guard. They are caught off guard on graduations and things like that that they don't know about. It just creates issues in general. There's no fee for that. The Coliseum is exempt from the special event permits. But it's just a, it's just a good practice. You're right in the middle of the city. Let the city know what's going on. Now, as far as other events and large concerts during special weekends, I mean, there's still adjoining property owners that are contributing to the problem. If this property had been confined, if the party was confined totally to the Coliseum, yeah, it's gonna be challenging. But they're still coming here for a reason, an overall promotion. And, and, and certain property owners in that area are renting their property for large amounts of money and having large events there. And this would put an end to that. Or at least give us the opportunity to, to get them on notice that unless they have a plan and move things back, get things off the road, then we're gonna shut the thing down. We won't even let them set up. And it gives us those tools to do that.
Which is, that's, that's my biggest problem I have with what we're trying to do. The Coliseum was allowing us up all year long. You don't have no problem. They go to the event and they leave. This is the one they don't leave. And that's the problem we have. I mean, you can get them ready for all the rest of them. You know, they do good. Even graduation, everybody goes home or go eat somewhere. Just when they don't leave. And that's the way the problem comes from.
Well, last year, I think this-
The event is set up for them to be up there in a crowd, wherever you want to call it. And that's, that's the problem. So I was talking to the Coliseum. And 90% of what they do is fine. They leave, go home, just like anything. This event, they spend the whole weekend on the beach in Highway 90.
I think up until two weeks before the event, we were told that there are no events, that they're not renting it. And then somebody came along and offered the Coliseum some money and they took it and just, just opened everything up. If we were meeting monthly, we can be able to talk with that. And the supervisors have a say in that. But, but there's really no dialogue that I know of between the supervisors and the sheriff and the Coliseum until after the event. Then there's a big postmortem and a big analysis of how can we do better? But, but they're, they're not on the same page before these events.
So the sheriff, the sheriff is not involved with you doing the, these events? When you have big events? When you bring in extra people, I mean, you bring in the sheriff's department part of it?
All right, we're, we're usually in contact with the Sheriff's Department pretty regularly. Yes, for most events.
I mean, to me, it's just moving along, moving up wherever they gotta go. But I mean, that's, I don't see where some of that stuff's gonna do any good because if you can't move the crowd out of them 20, 30,000 people, they're gonna be on Highway 90 and the beach. And I mean, what do you do about people on the beach? Well, you can't do anything about it. You know, it's beach and public. So, anyway, I just wanted to bring that part up there. And why are they exempt? What is that? You said they exempt.
Well, that's their, that's their business is to have events, have large events. So, and anybody that books the Coliseum has their own insurance with the Coliseum through the county. They have adequate parking there on the Coliseum grounds. And all we really know, need to know, the primary purpose is just to know if an event is going on. There's a whole nother layer of who has control over the property with city versus county and police powers and things like that. That would distract, I think, from what we're trying to do here is trying to get an ordinance in place. But that could be looked at down the road.
Real quick question. We can't, we can't mandate those meetings, can we? Because Coliseum is governed by the Board of Supervisors, correct?
That's right. Well, when we were putting this together, you recall Supervisor Martin, she was here after the, after the spring break. And she, I think she actually volunteered to be on the committee, to be on a committee to talk. And so talking with her, she was, felt this was a good idea to have a supervisor involvement. Roy Peterson, and I'm sure the new sheriff, Matt Haley. We're all working towards the same goal. And I don't think the Coliseum is gonna be opposed to it anyway. But, you know, especially if the supervisors are in favor of this.
I have a question, Nathan, when you're ready. All right, Mr. Demming.
Peter, I, this may have been in there. I can't recall, but I'm thinking, well, you mentioned people and the highway and getting, we have to keep them moving. That triggered a thought about parking because that plays a big part in this, exactly where people are parking. So do we have requirements in there for people who are going to be leasing or renting their lots for parking? Is there? I can't, I can't recall seeing that in there. And if it's not in there, I don't know how we would address that. But it'd be nice to have them on the radar too, so the police know where all these cars are, so they have an idea of where people are walking to and from. It's just a thought. Because there's limited parking on Highway 90. And typically what happens is they're in neighborhoods, they're obstructing traffic. We're having to tow them. People get upset. There are some lots where the owners just, you know, charge you 25 bucks and park your car there. But I'm thinking it'd be great if we could pull those property owners, at least mail them something, say, "You need to be aware and this is what you have to do." Or is there any way to get them on the radar so we know where they are?
Part of an event, if it's part of an event.
Come up, come up to the mic, Jerry. Thank you.
If the event that's being applied for is gonna require additional parking or possibly require additional parking, that would be part of the submittal that the applicant has to make to the special event coordinator when they come through the door, that this piece of property is gonna be used as a part of this. And then, once he's reviewed it, then it comes to the DRC committee serving as the special event committee. And we look at it from all perspectives now. There are some questions still in here about, you know, if it's an event, let's say in a, in a residential area, there's some language in here that says that they have to comply with the ordinances. And of course, parking lots aren't allowed in single-family residential. So we're gonna have to take a closer look at those kind of things. But that is part of the original submission, yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, right now, we talk about no parking of heavy trucks and things like that, trailers, which that was already in there. But as far as somebody just setting up a, a large-scale parking lot sort of for commercial purposes, I mean, I think at a minimum, they would have to at least apply for a permit, just a business permit. That's a business activity. And that would just be a, a $25 permit. But that would at least give the chief some data of these are parking lots and we're gonna expect some cars there.
But that wouldn't be allowed in a single-family residence, would it?
No, no.
Because you can't have commercial activity in a-
That's right. These are just for-
Like empty lots on the beach or something.
Empty lots on the beach.
All right, any other questions? Okay. So if we don't have any other questions, we will, I need a motion to adjourn this meeting. I have a first by Mr. Lawrence, a second by Mr. Gons, all in favor? Seven, zero.
Let me, let me, and let me clarify. I just, I think I misspoke earlier. Yeah, the, I said that we could have a first reading coming up. These ordinance did have a first reading-
So it would be a second reading?
Back year, months ago. So the next time they come up, that would be, that would be the second reading, so.
All right, so we're looking possibly at this being on the next Tuesday's agenda, September 12th. I know we're adopt, I think we're adopting a budget and-
Yeah, I guess depending on how much else is on the agenda that day.
All right, so either the 12th or the 19th. But we've already had, we've already conducted the first reading and then we had the workshops.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, this meeting is adjourned. I see, we had citizen comments already. The meeting's adjourned. But you can come talk to us individually or whatever. We have a little bit of time between our next meeting.